Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the city of Beach Grove, and at this time we will convene our common council meeting. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each council member to introduce himself, starting with my far right. Dave?
Dave Mobley, City Councilman-at-Large.
John Jennings, District Four.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District Three.
Ed Bell, District Two.
Kathy Coates, Councilman-at-Large.
At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, at this time, I'll ask for a motion to...I'll open the floor up for comments concerning the minutes of the last meeting. They were delivered late to you, and I apologize to that. So if the counsel has any comments or concerns, provided the minutes, I'll open it up at this time. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second it. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. The mayor's liaison report, Gary. Your timing is impeccable.
How are you today?
Good evening.
As you've already said, I'm Gary Lovelace, Mayor Ballard's neighborhood liaison. We got some information from citizens, which you guys already know about. The water company needs us to conserve water. So please be patient, be cognizant of that. I'm going to some of the businesses that have watering going on all the time. Not good. We've got lots of surfacing, resurfacing for roads. We've got sixteen bridges, six culverts, 110,000 linear feet of sidewalks that's being redone. So I know you guys live here, but you also live...you're outside of Beach Grove all the time, so. Roundabouts, as you know, we have three down in your area down here. They're not in the town, but just in this part of town. And those are still being worked on. You remember the tacks that were found on the Monon Trail? They used like a roofer's kind of big magnet to pick those up. They think they've got them all up, but if any of you ride the trail, be careful. There could still be some there. Due to the no-zone action days, the heat, the dryness, we are behind on right-of-way mowing, so some of the road sides don't look so good. But bear with us, we're about five days behind. That's set up in six different mowing cycles throughout the year. Historically, that's been four times a year we mowed. Now we've upped it to six times a year, so we want it to look a little better. We've seen some that have been pretty high. The city is treating their ash trees for the Emerald Ash Borer, and we found a company that would donate that to us. It's saved us $44,000 so far to treat these trees, mostly in parks, that they've been doing to test and see if it works. And it's no cost to taxpayers. We have had one surplus tax sale. We have five more to go. So if any of you are looking for cheap real estate online, indie.gov/treasurer. And on the treasurer's site, you'll find a bunch of different sales. Most of the actual properties are not listed at this point because they're not up yet. They're not having another one immediately. All right. What do you have for me, folks?
Do you have the name of the company that donated the treating of the trees? Because I'm sure they did it just so people could hear their name.
Valent Professional Products. Mr. Mayor?
We talked today, and I'm sorry I had to excuse myself from lunch. I had those three things going at once, and I appreciate the phone call and I appreciate the work over the weekend. We had a very busy Saturday.
I'm sure you did.
You and Gary Coombs helped us, and I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome, sir. Always glad to help.
I echo that. I appreciate it. Taking my phone call on Saturday, I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Next, we'll go to committee reports. We'll start with our Greenscape Commission.
Good evening. Tim Latimer, Beach Grove Greenscape Commission. I really only have a couple of things to mention tonight. At our last meeting on the eighteenth, June 18th, we talked about pursuing a tree planting project with the middle school. And we have...Dave Miller has contacted Dr. Kaiser, and we're going to get together and talk about that sometime in the next couple of weeks. A project that would plant some shade trees in a couple of different areas we were talking about. The other thing we talked about last week is...last meeting, rather, is Arbor Day. We will have an Arbor Day tree planting ceremony either the last week of September or the first week of October. And I'll get back to you on that when we have more details. And our next meeting will be July 16th at the Hornet Park Community Center, 6:00. And that's all I have for you.
Comments by council members?
Does this Greenscape Commission have a nursery of choice? If you're going to go out and get trees, do you have somebody that you go to?
We have several. Bree Hobbs is one that we go to. Do you have a suggestion? I mean, we're always open for suggestions.
I'll be on the market for some trees.
Ah, okay.
It was purely about me.
Contact Dave Miller. He's our expert. Dave and Beth...Dave Miller and Beth Berg.
Other comments from council members?
Do we have any of the ash trees that have the...
We have a few ash trees. We have not found any ash...and we don't have very many ash trees at all in this city. We do have a handful. I can't remember exactly where. I don't remember if we have any in Bolton Park or not. I inventoried that park, but I don't recall.
We cut down the biggest one in the spring.
Okay.
There's several more. They're okay at this point.
Yeah. No reports of any of those.
Any other comments? Tim, while you're up there, can we change this up and talk about the Promoters Club for a minute?
Sure. I am the president of the Beach Grove Promoters Club. As you probably know by now, we had to postpone the fireworks. It's just too dry, too dangerous. So what we're doing is we are going to have an activity on August 25th. It's on a Saturday. And we will have the same vendors, the Beach Grove High School Choir, the band, several other groups, you know, like we normally do for the third, who'll come out again on the 25th, sell products. We'll shoot off fireworks that night. And we're doing this in conjunction with Pure Gold Band, a local band. They're going to play that evening. What I envision, and this is not set in stone yet, but what I see is are the vendors selling food, beginning approximately 3:00, the band playing from approximately 7:30 until 9:00, and then shooting off the fireworks roughly at 9:00. So that's kind of what we have planned so far. And all of the vendors, all of the organizations who are planning on participating July 3rd are going to be on board with us on the 25th. As it stands right now, I haven't heard from everybody, but it's only been a few days, and it was a weekend, so it takes a while to get everybody notified and, well, can you make it? And can we do this? And so I think that we're going to have a great time. I think it's...I'm real pleased with how this came out. Mayor Buckley and I, and the chief of police, and the fire chief, and several others, we all met. Even the person who shoots off the fireworks, Indy...I'm sorry, Circle City Pyrotechnics, he was here. And I fully came to the meeting expecting to have to, you know, listen to him say, "Well, you know, we can water down the grass, and we can do this, and we can make this work, and I'm sure it'll be safe." And that's not the way it was at all. He came out saying, you know, "It's very dry, and it's very dangerous. We can water the area around where we shoot, but we can't do anything with all the trees in the park and the homes surrounding the park. It's just too dangerous." And as you can see, several other...as soon as we announced that we were going to postpone our fireworks, several other communities did too. So that's what we're doing. August 25th, so put that on your calendars. Help us, please, spread the word.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Of course.
Okay.
I commend the Brain Trust that decided not to do that. Good decision. I wish somebody would have asked me so I could have agreed with you. Good decision to cancel it.
Okay.
Way too hot.
Oh, yeah.
And if you would, remind us every meeting about the August 25th.
Okay.
If you remind me, I can say it, but we just need it to be said at every meeting so that everybody knows.
Okay, will do.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Redevelopment Commission, John?
Good evening. Not a whole lot to report tonight. About the only thing we really have going on, we're having a special meeting Thursday, July 5th, here in chambers at 7:00, to go over and possibly sign a memorandum of understanding document with NRP group. That is just about all I have. Any questions?
For the council's information, can you explain what the NRP is, please?
They are a senior living group out of, I believe it's Columbus, Ohio, and they've approached us to purchase the whole rock pile site. And what they want to do, they want to build cottage-style senior living homes on that site. And right now, we don't have a purchase agreement or anything like that in place, but I believe this memorandum will get the process going for us to where we can get it sold and get them going.
Comments by council members or questions?
John, that section of the rock pile that is contaminated, how would that work?
It's in the back corner, east corner. It's down in the wedge. It's about an acre. We are working with, in the preliminary stages with IDIM, to possibly allow NRP to use our brownfields grant, them pay whatever cost it would be, but to use the grant to clean that site up, because it's my understanding, I believe, they want to put garages back in that area. But there will have to be some...and I got an email today from Kyle Hendricks at IDIM that he's going to...since we have never approached him with a residential-type usage, to go back and see exactly what IDIM will want us to do, or them for that fact, however this purchase agreement works out.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
That won't blow off, will it?
No. You said selling the rock pile.
Yes.
Last time we had talked, we were giving it away.
Well, I don't know.
We were contemplating...
I don't think we can give it away, but there will have to be some type of purchase of it, according to our statutes, whether...and again, don't quote me, whether it's a dollar or $10 or $100. It'll be whatever NRP and the Redevelopment Commission come to an agreement on.
So if we possibly...
But we won't...let me phrase it this way. The less we charge, the less we have to put in it. We're looking at $100,000 cleanup. We're 350-plus in it now. We feel it's time to...
That was, I think, maybe if we give them the property, they fix the problem.
Yes. And that's why I'm working with Kyle Hendricks at IDIM, to see if they can possibly...they would have to go and apply for their own grant or pay upfront to have it cleaned. And if they can possibly use our grant, then that speeds the whole process up for them.
Thank you.
But at this point, I don't have a definite answer on that.
True. True.
Any other questions?
Thank you, John. Our public safety departments, public safety report. Chief?
Mayor and Board, the last public safety meeting was canceled. We had several members who were unable to attend. Chief Schwartz and I were able to get together and discuss several issues about the no-burning ban here in the city, and we discussed the severe drought conditions that are occurring at that time. We just prepared ourselves for the meeting we had with the Promoters Club in the afternoon.
Any updates on equipment?
As far as fire equipment, we had an issue with engine 102 approximately about a week and a half ago, had problems with being no-start. We had a global fire apparatus come down and actually fix a wire for us on the apparatus. So hopefully, that will alleviate the issues we were having with the no-start on that engine. The rest of our apparatus are doing fine at this time, so we're just plugging on in that aspect.
All right. Questions by council members or comments? While we're talking about fireworks, I'd like to defer to our city attorney for just a minute and explain the emergency order that was issued last Saturday for the council's information.
Sure. Last Saturday, the mayor issued Executive Order 1, 2012, which essentially prohibits any open burning, like bonfires, and then any private use of fireworks. If you're caught by law enforcement, you could be fined up to $2,500. This proclamation was filed in the Marion Superior Court today, so it is...it's in effect as we see here today. This remains in effect until July 7th. At that point in time, if the mayor deems it necessary to continue the proclamation, he's got to go through the common council to do that. But right now, the prohibition of open burning and private use of fireworks is prohibited within the confines of the city of Beach Grove.
So what I'll do, counsel, is Friday, if the condition still exists, I will get ahold of you and ask for your opinion on if we should continue tonight. And if the majority of you say we'll continue, then we will extend it.
Okay.
That will be July the 7th. Anything else, counsel?
I think that's it. Just, again, $2,500...you could be fined up to $2,500, so just be aware of that. It's very serious.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, chief.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Clarify. What about little sprinklers for children, sparklers, or whatever they're called? Are those...
Prohibited.
They're all everything. And grills, those are not prohibited. Like a barbecue grill or gas grill, those are okay.
We're talking about the open pits where people are having the barbecues and pig roasts and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Last report is financial report. Dan?
Okay. I passed out reports to all the council people, but just for the citizens' knowledge, the State Board of Accounts arrived on June the 7th for our audit. They will be here for six to eight weeks, so they're about halfway through it right now. We've gotten our tax money in for the general account, and I'll give you the bank balances on two of the accounts. The general account, we've got $3,518,726.85. The wastewater, which is our second account that we use on a regular basis, is $640,834.62. All the bank statements will be online as of tomorrow. It sounds like we ended the year with a million-dollar surplus for the first half of the year. But if you take into account that there's $750,000 for Main Street and the money we got for the makeup distributions and the rainy day fund, we would have not made it through the month of June for payrolls. So even though it looks by appearance that there was extra money in there, there really was not. As far as payments we paid in June, we had a 2002 gold bond that was $53,125, a 2005 sewage works bond that was $31,572.90, an SRF loan for $11,433, and a tax anticipation warrant for $782,838.38. And then in July, we have two RDC payments, one for $141,805.50 and one for $146,298.25. The tax anticipation warrant, I just wanted to let the citizens know, in the past, that's always been paid off on December 31st. This time here, it was partial payment on the last...or it's due June 29th, and the remainder of the balance, which is about $1,006,000, that will be due the last day of the year. So it puts us in a little bit better financial shape, knowing where we stand by paying this off halfway through. Plus, our interest rate on this loan was 1.05%, which is an excellent rate. So I think it's important to know by doing this, that helped our interest rate also.
Very good, Dan. Comments or questions by council members?
Yes, Dan?
Yes.
Could you explain what the Main Street loans are?
Okay. The Main Street loans was put into operation years ago, and that's, for example, I'll just use Napoli's. When they redid the front of their building and remodeled and so forth, they got a loan from the city, and it's a low-interest loan. And whatever they borrow from the bank, they can actually get from the city also up to $40,000. So if someone wanted to get a $20,000 loan from the bank, they could also get $20,000 of low-interest rate from the city. And that has been done in the past. We've still got some loans ongoing that people still owe the city for.
But we continue to do that?
We have not done it since the first of the year when we've taken office. We've had a couple people approach us that's interested in doing that, and we will look very close into it. To be honest with you, so far, our recapture rate on the money has not been very good. Out of probably ten loans, we've got three of them that are actively paying us on a regular basis. We've had several that have went bankrupt. We have several that just don't pay us at all, and we're in the process right now of filing in court against anyone that is in default of these loans.
Thank you, Dan.
Other comments by council members? Thank you, Dan. No one signed up to speak publicly this evening, non-bond-related, so we will move to the public hearing on general obligation bond 2012. Before we start, I would ask for your cooperation. The council needs to hear what is being said. So I ask to keep your opinions to yourself, and I ask that you be courteous and let whomever wants to speak to come up and speak to the council, please. We'll go ahead and start the proceedings. The first person that signed up to speak is John Morgan. John, could you state your name and your address when you get up here?
My name's John Morgan. I live at 1415 Main Street here in Beach Grove. Just a short...I'm for this bond. I think we need to get our buildings in line, our new equipment, and get the parks straightened out, get Main Street going. I think it's a great deal. I just wanted to let you know that I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John.
The next person that signed up to speak is Eric Brown. Eric, state your name and your home address, please.
Eric Brown. I live at 5705 Churchman Avenue, and I have the privilege...I've been to every one of these buildings. I actually work around Beach Grove. I'm a contractor here. And the shape that these buildings are in, you'd really be surprised. We really need this bond. And then our equipment, that our fire trucks are just really...it's just something that we really need, and I'm for the bond, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
The next person that's signed up to speak is Joe Grant. Joe, could you please come forward?
My name is Joe Grant. I live at 1313 Park Meadow Way. I'm here tonight also supporting the bond. I spoke to the council approximately six weeks ago when this bond was being talked about. I'll repeat what I said that night because it's very important. I've lived in Beach Grove for 35 years. I've been on the fire department for 30 years. And in 30 years I've been on the fire department, never has the fire equipment and the fire stations been in as bad a shape as they currently are. It's not fair to ask our firefighters to live in the conditions they have to live in on a daily basis, let alone use the fire equipment that we have. I think it was two weeks ago, we had two of our fire trucks break down, and we had to go borrow a fire truck. That's inexcusable. There's no reason why this city cannot provide equipment for their firefighters to do their Never have we had to borrow fire trucks on a regular basis like we've had to do in the last two years, in 30 years. I personally don't see where the city would ever come up with the money to purchase fire equipment, put roofs on buildings, and complete the Main Street project without this bond. So I guess what I'm here tonight, and most of the people here tonight, are asking you, if you're in favor of public safety in Beach Grove and Main Street, vote for this bond. Because however you spin it, if you vote against this bond, you're voting against public safety, and you're voting against Main Street. Period.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Next person that signed up to speak is Dick Watkins. Dick?
My name is Dick Watkins. I've been affiliated with Beach Grove for about four to six years. My wife's lived here about all her life. I'm a little league parent. Now, I'm a little league grandparent, and the conditions down there are very, very bad. I'll just make one of the statements about why I think it's bad. I'm disabled 100%. I can't even go to the bathroom down there. They have no handicap-accessible bathroom, which is ridiculous. The parking lot is terrible. The plain fields are terrible. You know, I've been down there several years. I coached down there for years. That used to be the pride of Beach Grove. It's time to renew all that stuff and get it back like it was. I think it's, you know, I'm all for this bond situation. Let's get down there and go to work on it and help everybody. I'll make it look like it used to. I'd be very proud of that, I'll tell you. I spent many, many hours down here, my younger life. But I appreciate Mayor Buckley and the city council for allowing me to come down and say something. Do you have anybody got any questions, anything? I thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next person that's signed up to speak is Mike Jarvis. Mike?
Mike Jarvis, 73, South Second Avenue, Beach Grove. I've spent some time with the mayor on this whole bond issue. I know what buildings are in need of repair. I've seen things that could wait to be repaired, and I see things that, over a time period, could be repaired. I agree that we need our fire trucks, that we need our roofs on the city buildings completed, but I have reservations on other things. The thing that I ask the council to take into consideration is what the people of their districts have spoken to them about concerning if this... districts have spoken to them about concerning if this bond could be done at what the price they want, or at a reduced cost to get the most critical repairs done. That's it.
Mike, what are some of the things that you have questions about?
Questions on things that I could say that, in my own opinion, that could possibly wait to be done are the tear down of park structures that may, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know. I can only look, but if they're not going to collapse, if they're not going to endanger anybody to be in there right now, then they're still good. And if our restrooms that we still have are operational, then why replace them when it's going to cost us to tear it down, clean it up, and then put in the new ones? That's all I have.
The only thing I want to say about the park structure, I mean, the one on Ice Street, we really need to do something with that. You can go down Ice Street and look over there, and you can't see what's going on over there.
I agree.
That's dangerous. I mean, you know, we got kids here in Beech Grove that play at that park, and it's not worth one kid getting hurt or anything. I think it's really necessary because it's, and I've looked at the building, the walls are cracking, and there's other problems. Have you looked at it?
I've looked at it. The center beam needs replaced, the roof needs replaced, and there's one place that appears looks like a snowplow had hit it.
Okay, then you know what I'm talking about.
But it's all, the structure's still sound. If the structure's not sound right now, then it should be condemned and not rented out for the public to use.
Yeah, but we need to rebuild that one. We really do. That was a mistake that we made a long time ago. Now we have the chance to fix it. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Next one signed up to speak is Jim Huser. Jim?
Good evening, councilor and mayor, and all the citizens of Beech Grove. If you don't know me, my name's Jim Huser. I own a cabinet shop at 3rd and Main. I live in Indianapolis now. However, I'm all for this bond to get passed because of the renovation of Main Street is just vital to our city. I'm thinking about selling my business because there's no business there, and nobody wants to buy anything. Come in a shop where you got to walk over a dam to get in the door, so you don't have stormwater coming in it. And, you know, I can't rent out the business that I have on the side, the building that I have on the side, so I'm renting it for storage for $100 a month to a friend of mine. And this is no way to operate the city when we've been, you know, promised to have this for six or seven years at least. And I've been in that building for 16 years in there. I've been a dag on thing done about it, and it's getting pretty upsetting about it, you know, the whole street. When I was younger, I worked at a X-9 shoe store, which Jim Kaufman now owns, and you couldn't find a parking spot on Main Street on Saturday afternoon. Now you can go down Main Street and drive 100 miles an hour, and you wouldn't even hit anybody, you know? So, not that I intend to do that, but, you know. But I'm just saying, it's just such a difference in this city, and it needs to be brought back to where it was at. And there's people that I know that would like to open, you know, two people I know for sure would like to open businesses on Main Street, but what are they going to do? Put sandbags in front of their doors? It looks like Hickbill, you know? So that's just, that's the way I feel about it. I'm pretty, pretty in support of the whole bill passing, the whole thing passing, so. If you've got any questions, or if you need cabinets, come down and see me.
Counsel, that concludes the people who have signed up to speak tonight, and I will ask one more time, is there anybody who has not signed up to speak that would like to come forward and address the city council?
My name's Joe Hague. I live in 145 North Fourth, Beech Grove. I've lived here 54 years. It's getting to the point where I want to move. Six houses on my block, on my side of the street are vacant, some of them for 17, 18, and 15 years. I've complained about all this for ages. I know Main Street, when I first got out here, was almost a gravel street. It definitely needs the bond issue. As far as the buildings are concerned on Main Street, they need all the help they can get. If it's possible, everybody on Main Street should get a good facelift on the front of the buildings. Some of them already have. It looks nice, real nice. Proud of it. Proud of the work that's been done so far. But I know as well as you council people know, we've got a long way to go. So the bond issue needs to come in. That's all I got.
Thank you, Joe. Joe Griffin, did you raise your hand? Go ahead, Joe. Come on up.
Well, you guys know me, Joe Griffin, 65 South 17th, Beech Grove. On this bond, as I go through it, I sit there and look, can't we use some of the rocks off the rock pile to put down there for our washaway? That was brought up in our RDC meeting, and transferring some of that over to there, the IDM guy said, "That's a pretty decent idea. Look closer at those things." Because we've got a lot of rocks sitting around there. He said, "Do not sell those rocks. They're a very valuable piece of property, and we can use it for some of that washout." Maybe that'll defer some of the costs that we have on that. You're sitting here looking at the $28,500 for the ADA report. It sounded like, from when I was listening to it, pretty much each department had their own report down, and then the report basically state that all's we have to do is show that we have a report, that we are working towards it, and have a plan going towards it. Because we're supposed to try to defer the cost of the third parties. That's $28,500, and it sounded like departments were already doing that and in process of doing that. That could be a tax savings also. You sit there and look at Main Street. Main Street, nobody's arguing it doesn't have to be done, but remember, there wasn't one regular citizen that was ever involved on the planning of Main Street. The plans, we've never seen. And what we have seen have been really irrelevant, and at the very first RDC meeting, the president at that time informed us that it would be totally transparent, and we would be able to see all the plans and have some sort of input into it. It needs to be done. Nobody's arguing that. How and what? I don't know. Is it going to be legal for the city to take over that under the funding? Because as we learned here earlier, that we just can't give away property. Under that one current grant, that is a very strict grant that was passed out, that TNE grant. And basically what it is, is a reimbursement grant. You have to spend the money and spend it correctly in order to get that back. Can that be done? Because they are very tight. No sense throwing money away without being 100% sure first. We're looking at the shelters. We're tearing down brand-new shelters, or not brand-new, but the same type of shelters we're going to put back up. You know, that doesn't make any sense. Then when you sit there and think about it, we're talking about tearing down South Grove Shelter. When you think of South Grove Shelter, what do you think about? First thing comes by mind is that shelter sitting right there. Did you not name a park after somebody after that? And you've seen it's so important that in your special ordinance, you put in the second paragraph, "Whereas Don Chalice was instrumental in development of South Grove Park. He introduced discussions concerning the current shelter house in 1968, which he later constructed." We heard his daughter get up here and say, "That took a lot of hours away from his family, and that was done of a project of love to give back to the city." A project of love. Why don't we try to conserve and save history in Beech Grove instead of tearing it down? It's so easy to tear it down and drive on. Why not modify it? Why not bring the sides down and make it see-through? Why not modify just a little piece? Put modern rafters in there. Adjust what we need to adjust, but let's keep the integrity of it. That is a part of Beech Grove. He started on it in 1968 and finished in 72. Worked with his dad, family, friends. Why tear down history? It's lasted since 1972. The salesman believes, he believes that these new shelter houses are going to last approximately 20 years. This has lasted since 1972. You know, that's a piece of Beech Grove history. When you think of South Grove, you think of that shelter. I used to work for Mr. Chalice. If anybody should cuss them or afters, that's me, because I had to paint them every year. I had to chase the wasps and bees out of there. But I'm telling you what, that is a part of Beech Grove history. Why tear it down? Why get rid of it? It was done out of love for the city, you know? We sit here and start looking at the cameras. There's plenty of people sitting up there now that bewailed the camera usage, said it was worthless, and we even had dispatch in at that time. The salesman didn't even know if they had backup on the batteries. He had no idea. Ask, what was his first question? He wasn't even on TV yet. He goes, "Are they illuminated down there?" Well, heck, he hadn't even looked at them. Then later asked by another council person, "Can you pick ID a person's face?" Well, of course, there's plenty of light. Uh-huh. They look good in pictures. They look good on YouTube, but he has absolutely no idea. My question is, is why not put in floodlights? You've got seven areas where you can put the cameras, you said. Put floodlights in there, motion detectors. If you're going to get the cameras, lease them. Lease them from a company that knows what they're actually doing. I've seen what can happen on companies that don't. I've worked around several of them. I've worked in corporate world. I've seen that. I'm in IT world, putting in bad ones. And isn't one of the big things on this bond, it has to last a minimum of 10 years? Who up there sitting now really thinks that these cameras are going to be usable for 10 years? A usability of 10 years? Because the more you use these DVRs, the worse they get. Who really thinks those cameras are going to be good in 10 years? They'll probably obsolete in five. You know, his stunning characteristic of what a luminous are, boy, I'm, got me buzzing there, you know? His whole thing, look on the pictures, look on YouTube. They look great. You know, there we are. This is a piece of Beech Grove history. Don't tear it down. Redo it. Redo it the modern way. Put fiberglass ceilings up there. Put a fiberglass roof up there. Use modern rafters. Please don't tear down a piece of history. His family sacrificed for it. He gave it for the love of the citizens of Beech Grove, and the citizens of Beech Grove showed true thing. They pitched in to help build it, you know? We're saying that our taxes aren't going to go up. Page 20 out of that, you know, covenant to levy the tax. "The full faith and credit of the city are hereby enbrokefully pledged to punctual payment of the principal and interest on the bonds according to their terms. Such tax shall deposit at first before any other deposits of the tax revenues by the city into a separate bond, the bond payment fund, and used to pay principal and interest on the bonds, when due, together with any fiscal agency charges. If the funds deposited into the bond fund are insufficient to meet and pay the principal and interest of the bonds as they become due when the city covenants to transfer other available funds to the city to meet the principal and interest due on the bonds." In other words, you're going to take money from Peter to pay Paul. You know, the payment of them. It says on page 18, "No conditional bid or bid for less than 98% of the bonds will be considered." So what happens if we sell a bond for 98%? This herb will go bankrupt on some of these. What if we sell one for 98% and becomes due? Do we have to pay the full 100% back on principal and interest? Are we paying on the 98%? You know, can, we were told that all the money's going to be used for projects here in Beech Grove. But on page 23, it says, "At least 95% of proceeds of the bonds will be used for local government activities in the city of the governmental unit, the jurisdiction of which is the entire within the jurisdiction of the city." So right here, we're just saying only 95% have to be used for these projects, you know? We're getting a little bit of stuff coming back and forth. Do we need this stuff? Yeah, we need this stuff. And one thing we're totally overlooking, you know, we're talking about public safety. We're talking about, we're talking about streets, talking about sidewalks. We're talking about roads. We're talking about alleys. We're talking about sewer usage. Those are the obvious ones. But also remember, you have to look at the whole source of all this. That's a sound budget. Do we have a sound budget? You know, also, we're also looking at lower taxes. That's public safety. Lower taxes bring people in, bring people to fill the streets up, bring people to fill these houses up that we're hearing about. That's part of public safety. Don't be so political. Take the politics out of it. Because when you get political, that is public safety out the door. You're chasing stuff on around. Take the politics out of it, you know? Another thing that we're failing to look at is the circuit breaker. People act as if it doesn't exist. There's a report given out every year that the state gives out. Right here's the early report. Mayor Dennis, you remember when I took you down there, and we talked to some very influential people down there, and you were advised of this. Basically, essentially what it is, is it's a savings for the citizen and a loss for the government. In the state of Indiana, the average mean, we want to blame the economy we're living in. The average mean for all the counties in the state of Indiana is 3.8%. The city of Marion County, Indianapolis basically, is 12.7%. Beech Grove this year is 36.1%. We're missing 36.1% of our budget, roughly around $2 million, even though it shows up here. Remember, Mr. Mayor? You said, "Well, we got it right there." It shows up on paper, but doesn't show up in your bank account. $2.1 million.
We are monitoring that with Cindy every day.
So that's a concern. We have to take that into account. Now, by taking this money out, because the circuit breaker for the people, when you exceed your spending limit, that's when it kicks in. We've clearly exceeded it. Is this the best for Beech Grove? Is this going to take care of the immediate needs of our town? But is it going to be the best for the future? I don't know. You know, those decisions rest squarely on your guys' shoulders. What you make and say today, that's going to squarely sit on your shoulders. Where the make and break point for Beech Grove? How have you guys really researched into this? You know, yeah, we need all sorts of things done, but bottom line is, is don't, whatever you spend or whatever you don't do, that circuit breaker's going to make up for it. And that circuit breaker's a pain. 36.1% is what it currently stands. You know, we have the highest taxes in Marion County. You can't increase the levy too much more, and even if you do increase the levy, guess what? Circuit breaker don't care. So we're in trouble. It rests squarely on your guys' shoulders, you know? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anyone else who did not sign up? Joe, step forward, please.
My name is Joe Wofler, 415, 413 Main Street. I am the guy that has Chocola Incorporated. We brought Chocola back to the market, which start right down the street here. And by the way, it is doing good. Chocola's going crazy. What the fella just said here, in 2010, I've been down here for 16 years. The only thing I'm missing down there is paddles, so I can take my boat up and down Main Street. The deal was, and I'm sure some of you folks have seen this. Has anybody seen that? This is, the thing was put out by Mayor Wright. Now, I'm not going to read it all to you, but if anybody wants to look at it, can look at it. They was talking about the city of Zionsville. Well, I'm a Fountain Square boy, grew up on the south side, and folks, we're not Zionsville. We're Beech Grove, Indiana, Indianapolis, Indiana. He says, "One of the most exciting progress lies in the innovative re-vision of our city, including making our entire community wireless this year, building a four-mile walking trail that will connect our city, parks, downtown, business, district, and libraries, schools, and neighborhoods in 2010, and renovating our Main Street in 2011. I still have sandbags. Where did the money go? Where did the mayor go? Somebody ought to show up." Now, this is not Zionsville. Let's all get it. I do not live here. I am a Democrat. So let's get that on the table. I voted, and I helped Buckley get elected. I'm not a bit unhappy about it, and I helped you. I hung your sign in my window. But I'm telling you at this present time, if this is not done, we, Chocola, the cow power, is leaving this town. And at the present time, we just worked the Marion County Fair, and I've been here for, this is my third meeting, so it ain't my first time to show up. We've been out, and then, I don't know if your kids come home with this. When we sell a can of choc- When we sell a can of Chocola, so much goes to your school system. Just cannot buy it in the stores. There it is. I bought enough for everybody to take a look at, if you'd like to see it. And what we don't know, and what we can't break, but I'm bringing it tonight, we have been contacted, we could have sold out a good while ago, we have been contacted by Walgreens. They flew in here, they met with us, they meet with us tomorrow at 2:00, and we'll probably end up, we're going to, not probably, we're going to cut our deal with Walmart. That's 8,300 stores in the United States of America. 8,300, that's employees. We need a billing, and we're going to put it on Main Street, but we're not going to put it on Main Street and have a boat at the same time. So you make your decision, we'll make our decision. We're here because of what we did. And let me say something else. Even Walgreens has committed to doing things for the school system that we come up to. They're going to make sure every can that we sell, Beech Grove Schools gets X amount of dollars per can. So it's all over, yea or nay. But let me tell you something. I'm a Marine. Mobile, you're a Marine. You're a Marine. And the fellow back there's a Marine. I fought for my country, 32 months across the water. And I was in recon. And I'm going to tell you, everything's not fair. I got sentenced to 42 years in the Philippines for doing what the United States government told me to do. I give a lot of speeches, and I'm going to tell you something. I end my speech when I went in at the night. Believe in your country, but don't believe what you read about your country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who did not sign up that would like to speak? Dick, you want to come back again? Come back up, Dick, please.
Forgot to tell the council and you that there's many occasions women are pushing baby carriages or what have you. It's ball games, they can't get through all that browsing on it, too. I mean, if the council wants to go down and take a look, go down and take a look so you know exactly what I'm talking about. But I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Mayor Wiley, you want to comment, please?
Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me speak for you, to you for just a minute. I'm not going to take a lot of time. Most of the things that I would have said have already been said. I hope that I'm, when I urge you to pass this bond issue tonight, I'm speaking for most of, if not all, the people here tonight, and most of, not all, the people in the city of Beech Grove. It's absolutely imperative that we pass this bond issue tonight. We've got fire equipment that needs to be replaced. We've got ambulances that need to be replaced. I thought I saw some new police cars on the street over the weekend, which is good. But we can't let our police and fire departments operate with equipment that's not safe, not only for them, but for the people that they protect. You know, you can, you cannot pass this bond issue tonight, but you're only putting back what is evident, you're going to have to do. And when you do it two, five, 10 years from now, what it's going to cost you then is going to be substantially more than what it costs you now. And the, and the interest on that is going to be substantially more. So in closing, I would just urgently ask you to pass this bond issue tonight unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who did not sign up? At this time, we will close the public hearing, and we will bring General Ordinance Number 18, 2012 up for third and final reading. At this time, I will open the floor to the council for comments or questions.
Mayor, I want to thank the people tonight for showing up and giving their opinions. That's what we need deeply. I wish we had a lot more input because of a city of 14,000-plus. You know, 12 people don't represent a big percentage. But I'm glad that people do come up and voice their opinion. So thank you very much.
Comments by further counsel, or other comments by council members?
Mayor, I would like to offer an amendment.
Go ahead.
Taking out all the miscellaneous things, the cable authority live feed, Hilltop Shelter, South Grove Shelter, security cameras, also the DPW repair shop area radiant heat tubes, and taking out of the DPW heavy truck drive and parking lot.
Okay. Anthony, repeat that again. The cable access?
Sorry. The cable authority live feed equipment.
Okay.
The Hilltop Shelter replacement. The South Grove Shelter replacement. Security cameras for the three parks. DPW repair shop area radiant heat tubes. DPW heavy truck drive and parking lot.
Question. Hadn't this already been voted down once?
Twice.
Twice?
So you'd like to introduce it again?
Yes.
Even though it's been voted down? Okay. There is a motion on the floor to remove the cable internet access.
By the way, if I, if I may say, this is a different amendment than the one I offered last time.
For the cable authority, the cameras in the parks, the improvements at DPW, including the drives and the heating units, and the two shelters. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor. I need a second?
I'll second.
All those, and I'll do it by roll call? Start it to my far right?
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
The motion is defeated, 4 to 2. We will move forward. I will ask for a motion to waive the rules to hear Ordinance Number 18, 2012, by title only.
Mayor, I'll say, said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 18, 2012, an ordinance of the city of Beech Grove, Indiana, authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the city for the purpose of providing funds to be used for the cost of acquiring a fire truck and an ambulance, improving several municipal building roofs, and various infrastructure improvement and updates and the incidental expenses in connection therewith. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 18, 2012, on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
Second.
And we will do it by roll call? To my far right?
Yes.
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 It passes 6 to nothing. This time, I will ask for a motion to waive the rules to hear General Ordinance Number 19, 2012, on third reading by title only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 19, 2012 passes 6 to nothing on third and final reading. At this time, I would ask our financial consultant, Jeff Peters and Heather James, our bond counsel, to approach the...
That was just for title.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We pass that, so I ask for a recommendation to approve General Ordinance Number 19, 2012, on third and final reading.
I'll make said motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Passes 6 to nothing. Now, sorry for that. Jeff Peters, our financial consultant. Heather James, our bond counsel, could you approach the podium and advise the council on our next step?
Good evening. I'm Heather James from Ice Miller, bond counsel to the city. Since the bond ordinance and the appropriation ordinance have been passed this evening, there are no additional government approvals necessary, so no more meetings. The next step will be to publish the statutorily required notices that basically explain the terms and the parameters of the bonds to potential bond purchasers. Jeff Peters will distribute an official statement, which is the document that we use to market the bonds to the open market, to potential bond purchasers. And in the meantime, I'll prepare all of the closing certificates, tax documents, legal opinions, everything that we need to paper the deal. And then the interested bidders will bid on the bonds in accordance with the parameters that were laid out in the bond ordinance that you approved tonight. And then the bonds will be sold and issued and paid back over time with property taxes. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, or turn it over to Jeff to explain the financial process.
Is there questions from the council for Heather James? I do have some questions for our financial consultant.
Thank you.
Jeff, some important points were brought up, and we monitor this all the time, Dan more than I, but we talked several times about the circuit breaker and the tax caps from a city perspective, and we met again at the end of May, as far as where we are at financially as a city.
Yep. And on those same points, Mayor, that I looked at, the, the circuit breaker obviously is an issue going forward, and one of the other comments was made about tax increase. Again, what it is that you've put in place tonight is really to replace the tax rate that you have been using to pay off your previous bonds. In regard to the circuit breaker, your percentage is high, that's true. That is something that we continue to monitor. The DLGF will not actually look at it on your debt certification, but it is, as Joe Griffin stated, required that you backfill the amount that you lose in property tax to continue to make those principal and interest payments. And that, you have already programmed in, programmed into your budget to use part of your COAT monies to do that for the debt service that you currently have, and you'll continue to do that going forward. So that is still par for the process of what it is that you've been doing.
And by doing this bond issue, the way we constructed it, where are we at from our maximum levy as to what we have done tonight?
Your maximum bond capacity versus, I believe, when we looked originally, it was close to 2.5 million. So, you know, you've still got another 500,000 if you saw a need that you had to do that going forward.
Yes.
And as we talked about before, too, if we had building issues, we could look at leased rental financings, which would actually be outside that 2.5 million dollar bond cap. And a couple of the comments I wanted to make on process and so forth, should have loan proceeds with the closing around the first week of August. So you'll have that inflow of cash. You can then start to actually process your payments as they come forward and do. The repayment going forward, we will assist the clerk treasurer in building that into your 2013 budget that will come before you. So you'll see those debt repayments on your budget that you'll approve this coming fall. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I have a question on the, we have another bond that matures next year. So that comes into play in 14, 2014, or?
We look at all your general obligation debts run through the same debt fund. So we just lump them together, and you apply a certain amount of property tax toward them in order to make those payments. And...